Community service of the Edward R. Murrow College of Communication at Washington.
Wednesday, August 10th, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission and begin with the first item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes of July 13. Do I hear of any additions, corrections, deletions?
I will move to approve.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Abstentions? Okay, minutes are approved. Correspondence? Mike, is there any correspondence from staff?
I don't believe so. I did talk about, or talked to Les McDonald, Public Works Director, about maybe coming and talking a little bit about our transportation. You know, we have the multi-modal transportation plan that was recently completed.
Oh, good.
And thought he'd come to one, maybe one of the September meetings and give an overview about that plan, just to have everybody, you know, become acquainted with it. And talk a little bit about, you know, what our future plans, especially when we grow further to the east and northeast, to talk about, you know, transportation, long-term goals for that. So I think he should for maybe September 14th.
Great.
And that could dovetail into, you know, in the comprehensive plan, we've got our thoroughfare plan. And we have, you know, largely the same information as far as street classifications that we do in the new multi-modal transportation plan. So we'll probably try to update the comprehensive plan with the new information from the multi-modal transportation plan, since that was just completed this last year and the comp plan's about six, seven years old now. So we'll probably look at doing an update to that shortly after that. So that'll be a good conversation starter there with Les coming.
Great, because I think that'll give us a good orientation to how the two interface. Any other correspondence anywhere? Okay, Transportation Commission meeting report. Joel.
Transportation Commission seems to be on summer schedule. We haven't, we haven't met for a while. We are meeting tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock in this room. And actually, I haven't seen the agenda. I was just trying to sign onto the website and the website wouldn't let me in here, so I don't, I don't have the agenda.
Okay.
Presumably it's posted on the city's webpage.
Okay. Well, I think it's, you know, it'll be really helpful to have that report from Les McDonald and we can ask him questions.
Right.
And who is the chair currently of the Transportation Commission?
Okay, we have, we have the agenda. Smart transit route updates, bicycle tourism. There's a work going on by both the Pullman and Moscow Chamber of Commerce, producing a brochure. And we've, we've seen, the commission has seen rough drafts of the brochure if it's going to be coming out talking about bicycle routes. So that'll be a topic of discussion. Report on identity on Main Street project.
That's the planning and development that we saw about a month or two ago. Hundred fifty-four unit, the student housing project, the mixed-use one.
Okay.
There, there's improvements to Highway 95 there, Main Street.
Okay.
That I'm sure that he'll probably be giving an update on what that may mean.
Right, yeah. Some questions of proximity of access streets to the main intersection. Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
What's you in? How come it doesn't let me? You have the official sign, sign in.
Okay, well, we've reached a point in our meeting where members of the public may speak to the commission regarding matters not on the agenda nor currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And as people walk in, is there any interest in speaking in the open microphone portion of our, our meeting tonight, which is about topic, from the public, about topics that are not related to items on the agenda? No, doesn't sound like it. Okay. Well, just for those of you who may be listening, this is a reminder that this is an opportunity to come speak your mind for three minutes about any topic that we're not currently considering. All right, the next item is the Peekaboo Estates final plat that Mike's going to present to us.
Well, this is just a follow-up to the preliminary plat that was approved earlier this year. We saw it in February and in council, I believe in March. So this is the property out on North Orchard Avenue. We had Highland Drive here to the west, as well as Ponderosa to the south, Tammerack to the south, and then Slonaker and Lanny Lane to the east. This property here outlined in red and sending your screen. So February 24th, the commission conducted a public hearing and recommended approval to city council, and that contained three conditions. The first three were contained in the city council approval, which happened on March 21st of 2016, that the Orchard Avenue right-of-way has to match the Orchard dedication through the subdivision to the south, which is the Evergreen Hills subdivision. The public utilities have to be extended to the northern boundary of Peekaboo Street, and that's the street heading, in the middle of the subdivision, heading due north. And that's to connect in the future to potential subdivisions to the north. Developer has to verify the proposed Peekaboo Street location's viable for a future extension. That's just in regards to the wetland ponds that are on properties, two properties to the north. There's a series of freshwater ponds, just to make sure that the roadway alignment as it currently presented in the plat is able to, you know, head to the east and veer around those wetlands. The developer shall enter a purchase agreement. So this was Track A, which was on the intersection of Lanny and Orchard. The city needs a water booster station to replace the one on Ponderosa. And so the, just need to, that wasn't finalized when we went through preliminary plat, and so that'll just be coming to final plat with council. It'll be a purchase agreement for the city to acquire that, that parcel. And Lanny Lane constructed to the alternative design developed by staff and includes a ten-foot wide pathway. And so this happened at the council level. There was a concern, and I'll get, I'll speak to, I got some images here that we'll talk a little bit about that. And then also a ten-foot wide pathway on the west side of Peekaboo Street heading to the north. And this all relates to a pathways master plan that Parks and Rec Department has developed for future Paradise Path in the area. So this was part of our pathways master plan. And so, you know, going through the process, Parks and Rec Department were concerned. This is what they're showing as far as future extensions of Paradise Path through the city. You can see we've got kind of the, and these are meant to be general alignments, heading, you know, east-west connection from Orchard to Lanny, as well as a future northerly path which would head just to the east through the, those freshwater ponds that I was referring to. This was the, the, the street alternative that staff had worked with the applicant in order to develop. In lieu of that pathway, we'd have a ten-foot wide sidewalk on one side of the street. This would allow for the opportunity to have on-street parking on both sides of the street. Lanny Lane's designated as a collector through that area, although it's unlikely to serve as a collector in the time being until maybe Lanny goes all the way through to the trail property on the Mountain View and the intersection of Darby Road there. And so in the, in the time being, in order to allow parking on both sides, this was the alternative that was approved by city council. And then in the future, when maybe the traffic levels get up to the volume that would necessitate having a collector function, we would have to strip parking on one side of the street and have a bike lane on that one side. And then the ten-foot wide path would continue to serve as the bike lane and the pedestrian facility on the south side. This is the, the final plat that was submitted, so this is pretty much the same as the preliminary plat. We've got 20 residential lots. It's within the R1 zone. We had the booster station parcel, Track A. And we also had Track B, which was the Parkland dedication, as well as the stormwater detention pond for the subdivision. And this isn't part of your packet, but I just wanted to show you some of the construction drawings that show the path through the property. You can see it here on the south side, ten-foot wide. And it just shows improvements on Orchard on the east side as well that head down in front of the Anderson property and tie into the existing sidewalks down there in the Evergreen Hills addition. This is just a closer view of that same area. It's likely that there's, there'll be some type of retention for the slopes up quite a bit from the street there for the sidewalk. And then it transitions into a ten-foot wide path through the south side. And then there's a ten-foot wide path, which is one of the conditions on Peekaboo Street that'll head north and it'll have the pathway connection to future subdivisions to the north.
Can you go back to that, go back to the plan that shows your proposed pathway, so with the little green lines? Go back to that larger map? Yeah. So I get the one coming through Peekaboo, on the, on the property line, but the one going up through this sort of, I'm gonna call it a little bit of, if not wet, at least damp land. How does that work? I don't understand that. I'm not sure. How can you just arbitrarily say it goes through these people's property and not on the, I get along the, the property line, because that's typically where we grab a little piece of, of space. But I'm just, I'd be happy to have you just chat about that for a minute.
Well, this just fits in with our pathways master plan that Parks and Rec adopted. But these aren't, these are, these lines are intended to be general, so they're not intended to obviously go right through the middle of those freshwater ponds there. It's just to be able to provide, you know, some type of pathway connection through the property in some fashion, just like a street won't head up in this direction right through those, you know, the wet, wetlands areas.
Well, I realize that we're, it's a little out of, off the topic at the moment, but it reminds me of the path, the famous Thompson path, it has some little wetlands. And when we go along the highway, that's such a beautiful one. And I, I, I can see a pathway going down through this more or less wetland. It could be some beautiful thing, except it goes right through people's property. So I'm, I'm just a little bit dumbfounded that you could imagine drawing it.
Well, I would say that we, we often identify paths that we hope will happen someday. In this case, they will, these, both the east, east-west path and the northwest path will presumably eventually follow roads, not, not out in the middle of nowhere as they were tentatively drawn. So, you know, we're, we're not talking about expropriating anybody's property.
Sure.
We're talking about when, when the land develops and when, when a highway goes off that direction, there will probably be a path along it. I, I take it in that spirit.
Yeah, it's just like the future roadways alignments, you know. We, they've looked at the topography and where you could put roads through and, you know, as we grow, just to anticipate, you know, those areas where we'll need these connections.
In the sense that's an extension of Peekaboo Street.
Yeah, that's just showing, so if you look, if you look at the subdivision, you know, that was the intention of having the path. And one of the conditions that, to have Scott take a look at the future alignment, just to make sure that the road was gonna be able to go north and go, you know, enough bearing to get around those freshwater ponds, you know, maybe go up on the east side of this ridge line. And so the, the path showing up in that direction would just, you know, could be, as these properties developed, it could be the Parkland dedication, you know, in the, in the form of, you know, freshwater ponds as well as a path running right next to them. And that's really the intention of the pathway.
Yeah, it's, it's really interesting. I, I'm not critical of it. It's, you, you just imagine that one of those property owners is going to say, "No, I'm never selling. It'll, has to remain this way forever." You know how that goes. We, we have a couple of those little parks around town. Okay, I don't wanna maybe make it a big issue. I just wanted to get to talk about it for a minute.
Yeah. So, you know, I just wanted to give you an idea of what happened at the council level, and it was really just revolves around the pathway going through the property in order to satisfy kind of the collector designation of Lanny Lane and allow more of a compromise in the interim, you know, pretty much recognizing that Lanny Lane wasn't gonna be utilized as a collector right now. It'd be more of a neighborhood street. But in the future, you know, when it may connect to, you know, cross all these, through all these properties and eventually end up at Mountain View Road, maybe at that point you'd see traffic volumes that would warrant, you know, a wider roadway with, with a bike lane on one side and not parking on both sides. And so that just kind of gives flexibility into the future as the roadway volumes increase. And so that was what was approved, so. Anyway, staff reviewed the, the final plat for compliance with city and state code requirements and found it to be in compliance and recommends the commission forward recommendation of approval on the city council. So I can certainly answer any questions that you have.
Is there any discussion?
Pretty good.
I'm sorry, I, I guess I'm wondering for us as a commission, should we have been seeing some things that council then, conditions, I mean, is that, did we miss something?
Well, there was, there was some concern in the public hearing about improving the pedestrian, or the friendliness of the street.
Right, right.
And for whatever reason, we left that alone.
Okay.
But I think we recognized that there was a need.
A need, yeah, okay.
Yeah. I mean, is that fair to say, do you think?
Yeah, and, you know, we were still kind of working through those at that point. You know, we usually leave these up to city council because they're the, the ones that are allowed to deviate from our street standards.
Okay.
So, you know, staff can't just say that, "Well, we can work on this alternative," and we can say that that's the alternative that you can use. It has to be approved by city council. And so I guess that, that probably wasn't ripe for you guys.
Okay, okay.
In my memory, we were a little bit hung up on the fact that it was a collector street plan to go through.
Yeah.
Joel.
Well, I, I missed the P and Z meeting at the time this was initially discussed. Was there any discussion about street names?
Yes.
The, the, this is, this is one of these unfortunate cases where a street changes name as it crosses Orchard, connecting Highland to Lanny Lane. But Highland itself is a very confusing street name since it's, makes a loop.
Right.
And that itself may be a justification for not carrying the Highland name further east. Was, was that?
Highland North, Highland South.
No, it was, it was more of.
It was Lanny and Lanny.
Landy and Lanny. Yeah, there's a Landy that's right here. There's only like two, you only have about two properties that have that address, but there was.
But there's a possibility of, of more to the north in a parcel that has never been developed.
Yeah, it could be that, you know, it's likely that there probably end up being maybe one more, one additional address. But yeah, that, that was, that was brought up at Planning and Zoning as well as city council. And there was, had some strong opinions for keeping Lanny, mainly because that was named after, I think, Mr. Slonaker's wife here. So that, that was, there's some historical.
Yeah, both of them.
Naming of Landy as well as Lanny. And there was discussion about that, but we already have a Lanny and we've got a couple addresses, you know, a couple of properties that are already addressed off of this Lanny. And it would require them to change their addresses or vice versa, you know, have them change their addresses. And that's always a pretty sore subject when you bring that up to people that have always used this address. All of a sudden, they're gonna change the street name on them. So council ended up just leaving it alone and saying that it just continued to be Lanny through that subdivision, so.
Just be thankful they didn't spell Landy with a Y and call it good.
Well, Joel, the Highland isn't exactly, I mean, there's a jog there, isn't there? The new, the new street.
One's south and one's north.
Well, no, here it is, right here. So it just comes around and then comes back out.
It's, it's, it's. Looking at it on the ground, it's pretty, pretty closely aligned, which is good. It should be.
Yeah.
So basically, you know, it's, it's not the only instance where a street changes its name as it, as it crosses another street. We're fairly good at that, but I've been in, been in towns which are terrible at that.
What is, what is that distance between the two center lines? It seems to me.
Not much.
Do you remember, Scott?
I do recall that distance, and we did line up Lanny Lane with Upper Highland, so.
Oh, you did it?
Yeah.
And it was lined up?
Yes.
Yeah, it's lined up.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think I see it. I don't think it was shown.
Oh, yeah, I see. Okay.
You can kind of see it over here in the distance. So, yeah, it's pretty much.
Well, it'll be just like Rome. We just change names.
Yeah.
Just go past the intersection, it's a new place.
You put, put a street sign there with, with an arrow. Highland this way, Lanny Lane that way.
Once you were in Highland, now you're in Lanny. Thank you.
Yeah.
So other questions or comments, or are we ready to make, move approval of?
I move approval of the final.
What?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Abstentions? Okay.
Me, oh, it was me.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I thought you said just a second.
Yeah.
I guess we should have given you a chance to talk if you.
Nope, no. That's a big question.
No arrows.
Okay. So now we're moving on to the 2016 citizen survey questions, and we're in kind of a preliminary formation stage, I think, or, well, we should finalize them in the, tonight we're just discussing what topics might be appropriate. And then, then we can start to formulate questions, but we need to finalize them by the next meeting, is that correct?
Well, we haven't got the official email yet, so.
Okay.
I would say that usually by September, probably the, the second meeting in September, we need to have it finalized, so that gives us a couple of meetings.
Okay.
But I figure I'd bring it up now and we'd go over some of our old survey questions and the results, and then just start thinking about the 2016 survey questions. So I just wanted to give a little bit of background about the citizen survey. Started in about 2002, and we collect this data every two years. It's kind of a benchmark for community perceptions, as well as to evaluate the municipal services that are delivered by the city. It samples 1,200 residential addresses, which is our statistically valid number based upon our population size. And so we originally started out that all commissions could have four questions, but now they've, I think it got too large, and so now they've whittled it down to two questions that each commission can ask in, in the survey. And so I, I reached back to 2008 and started going through those. We had four questions in 2008, and it was in regards to requiring water conservation in new developments such as like low-flow plumbing fixtures and appliances. And the results we got back were 68% saying strongly agree or agree with the idea. Then we asked about gated communities. 58% disagreed or strongly disagrees that they would support gated communities, and 22% agreed or strongly agreed that they would support that type of, in the community. And then we went on to the topic of allowing the development of mixed-use residential uses in new developments within single-family zoning districts. And it makes the, I guess that, the inclusion of these makes the neighborhood less desirable. And the results were 55% of those respondents indicated that. And more desirable was only 25% of the respondents. So kind of overwhelming that people didn't think that in their single-family zones, the introduction of mixed residential uses was a good thing. And then limited commercial, you know, what types of, limited commercial would you like to see? Or if you, the highest categories were new residential development, groceries and eating and drinking establishment scored the highest at 40, 41% as the type of mixed use that they would favor. And then we had daycare facilities and medical offices, which both scored 30%. Personal services, professional offices, convenience stores were the, were the next lowest, 23, 24, and 25%. And in 2010, we had a few statements there that closely represent your opinion. I would be interested in high-quality, high-density residential living opportunities, so an apartment, loft condominium near downtown University of Idaho campus. Not a whole lot agreed with that. So we had about 32%, 33% either strongly agreed or agreed. A lot were neutral. And then we had about the same, a little bit higher percentage disagreed or strongly disagree. And then we asked a question about the mixture of residential uses, so single-family, town homes, duplexes within single-family neighborhoods with common open space. So we kind of expounded upon the 2008 question with a little bit of a buffering between those uses. Would make the neighborhood more desirable, not really favorable, you know, it's kind of low, a lot of people were neutral. It was kind of in the, in the middle as far as the responses. And then the three most important planning items below that you feel should be addressed in planning future growth in the community. The highest ones ended up being economic development, I think was the highest, followed by traffic management and congestion, and then water resource planning were the, were the top three.
Do you know, you know, I read that, and what specifically, for those of you who might have been around when you posed that question, did you mean by economic development? I mean, what were the parameters for it?
And I wasn't around. Or I was around, but I wasn't.
So you have an al, okay, so now it's in Joel.
I think it's just an apple pie.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a mother and apple pie deal. Do we want to be successful in life? Yes. And, you know, I just, of course, it's a good thing, but it, there's, I don't think there's much bite to it. And I, I don't want to go further with the comment of economic development. But, you know, we're just as, if anytime we can get his company to come to town, we certainly try. We, I think the city has made, I think everybody's been happy about having new companies that hire people in town. But to say that we could have predicted that coming and that we did something wonderful that would deserve it, I doubt that we did. I mean, I don't know, it was somebody here who decided they wanted to be right here. You know, no one could have predicted that Schweitzer was going to invent something in his garage and want to stay in Pullman. That seems dumb to stay in Pullman, but he did. And of course, everybody's happy about it, but I don't think anybody could take credit except for Mr. Schweitzer for staying in Pullman.
I agree. I don't really think that economic development is very well-defined in people's minds.
It can mean a lot of things.
Well, in the context of the question, I was wondering if there was one.
It could be restaurants, it could be a whole host of, of things.
And to me, restaurants are not economic development. People basically spend the same amount on eating out. If you have a new restaurant, why don't eat out somewhere else?
Yeah.
Spread it around different ways.
That might have been part of the conversation about providing areas for industrial use and high-tech use. I'm, I can't remember that far back, but it might have been more in that context that we had not at that point really made that much effort to do that.
I kind of think it grows out of a sense that it has. I kind of think it grows out of a sense that is the question that can come up when we see how little we grow. Well, is Moscow friendly to economic development or new businesses? And so this is a, a sort of an effort to say yes, but without, I think, any purpose.
Speaking of industrial development, I haven't heard much of anything about the industrial park for a long time. Is that?
Yeah, I think with the closure of Alturas, they're looking at creating another urban renewal district, and so that would be the, the next one. But I think there's a little bit of hesitation unless there's a, you know, a big project or a larger company to start the rolls right now, and, you know, we start the, the clock ticking at our, I think it's 20 years is what they give us, and so if we have no project and it just sits, you know, idle for a number of years, we, I think that we're waiting until, you know, maybe we have a larger project in order to initiate the district so we have, you know, a little bit more opportunity to do some things down there.
I guess I was wondering whether, whether that might be somehow be a focus of a question. I, I don't have a question in mind, but, uh...
Yeah, we've, we've done, uh, most of the planning effort, we've done, uh, you know, master plan down there, and, and Terrografics has totally remapped the floodplain in that area, and so all, all the kind of groundwork, or a lot of it, research has already been done, uh, so it's just, uh, you know, kind of waiting for the right time to, to move.
And, you know, the water resource point is clearly tied up in my mind with economic development. I can't imagine why Ed wanted to stay here with, I mean, why would anybody bring a company to a town that doesn't have any water and can, and water's getting away from us? And so, yeah, I have to ask that question, and, and we haven't solved.
Schweitzer taps into two universities that supply tons of electrical engineers and other grads that fit right into his program.
Sure, and that would be the reason.
That's why they're there, that's why AHA was here. I mean, you know.
I, I get that, but, but the water is a big.
I don't think they think about it. I don't think they see it as an eminent.
They don't need much water, you know. High-tech people don't need much water. Other industries would. In other words, industries that would come to Lewiston or Coeur d'Alene or Boise wouldn't come here because there's a river running through all those other places, and it makes it possible for people. So until we figure out how to build a reservoir, I think we're still just going to be, uh, the water resource planning, what, what we do is just keep squeezing ourselves as residential people, you know, to put on yet another brick in the toilet, and I, I don't know if that's good enough. But, so in my mind, the water resource planning and the economic development are both a little ethereal.
I tried to stop myself, but that's a Pink Floyd song, isn't it? Another Brick in the Toilet?
Well, it certainly can be if it is.
I'm sorry.
Well, and traffic management and congestion is the other big one, and, you know. And that's a, that's a hard one to process when you've just been a weekend in Seattle, you know.
As Kelly says, it's rush minute.
Well, now it's more like rush five minutes, but, yeah.
Well, we were looking at.
Well, the students will be back here in very soon. We'll.
The rails are. Can hear them on the rails, they're heading into town.
Well, we were looking at today, these, I don't know if you've seen it, in China, they had developed these giant buses now. They had cars just drive under. And they're like the capacity of maybe eight to 10 regular buses.
That sounds scary.
And it's like, I don't know, it looks like they're on some type of rail, you know, the wheels, but it looks like rails.
So they get raised up like those parking lots?
Yeah, they're way up in the air, and, uh, and then they load them, and, uh, and so, yeah, it's like a, kind of a light rail that goes through the, the city.
So it's essentially light rail that doesn't block traffic.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
Yeah, that's, because Seattle could have. Seattle's, uh, solution to that was just go underground. Let the bus drop into the ground here, come out over there, and, you know, because it was taking the bus an hour to get through town, you know, 20 blocks, and you couldn't get through town.
Well, with this, you don't, you don't have the infrastructure where you have to go down, you know, it's above ground and above that, and then it's probably quite a bit cheaper than doing a subway, or, you know.
Just, it's an interesting side, like, uh, they've got a book in the library by Petrowski, the engineer, who's written a couple of popular engineering books, but the one I'm reading right now is all about infrastructure and the history of it and the development of it. It's a cracking good read.
And then we followed up on, I think, the question from 2008 about limited commercial uses within residential areas, and tracked that, you know, what would be desirable to have in close proximity to your residence. Uh, the highest one, highest scoring ones were groceries, eating and drinking establishments, and, uh, like daycare facilities, so. Which we would all allow in, in neighborhood business, which is, you know, kind of the zone that's intended to be, uh, within residential development. 2012, this is when we were limited to a couple questions. It was all in regards to accessory dwelling units, so we were talking about, you know, potentially taking on this project at that time, and just trying to gauge the acceptance of ADUs within the community and within your neighborhood, and so, um, give a little bit of an explanation about it, what an ADU is, and then saying that we're considering allowing them, and then asked the question about, I would support allowing accessory uses, accessory dwelling units in my neighborhood, and quite a bit, you know, quite a few people ended up supporting them, and so this was kind of a basis of moving forward with that project. And then we had a follow-up question, if, if it was allowed in my neighborhood, would I be interested in adding an ADU to my property, which not a whole lot of people indicated they were, were, wanted to add one, but they, you know, would, would like to allow their neighbor to have that opportunity, so. We use these questions as we move through the ADU process. Uh, last year, or not last year, but 2014, our last citizen survey, we asked a question on climate change. The city of Moscow should consider the issue of climate change as it plans for the future. It was, you know, over, a little less than 50% support, 24% were neutral, and then you had about 22% that were saying that that, you know, we shouldn't take that into consideration when we plan for the future. And then we had a larger question that talked about kind of characteristics of, of two neighborhoods, and provided the options that they could check, you know, which one was more important to them. A lot of them were, were pretty even, you know, you had, you know, a neighborhood that includes a mix of housing types, stores, businesses that are easy to walk to, or a neighborhood that's primary, primarily single-family, and you got to drive everywhere. Uh, you know, a little more towards the mixed-use neighborhood where you can walk to, to.
And the previous year, they did not like mixed use.
Yeah.
Well, there's a, there is a trending change in the millennial generation in particular. So is there any correlation with the survey results and demographics at all? I mean, you know, like, there's no age indication or anything on the survey, or is there?
I mean, we, yeah, we tracked that information, um, but I haven't reviewed it to, to see what the increase is, but that'd be interesting to, to go back and see if, you know, if there was more respondents that were, you know.
Well, one of the reasons I ask is we just approved the development with very little parking, assuming there'll be a cultural change of less interest in driving cars, and so I guess I would like to know how locally the statistics bear out for that. It would be interesting to know.
Yeah.
Anecdotally, running into 20-somethings that, that don't have a car and have no intention of getting them, you know, and I can't, I can't imagine that when I was 20.
Well, yeah, that bottom, that shows a lot right there.
Yep.
Yeah, that's pretty cut and dry there, but, uh, you know, everybody wants kind of neighborhoods with well-connected sidewalks, bicycle facilities, like bike lanes, separated pathways, so.
Yeah, that's actually another apple pie and motherhood question.
But, you know, it, uh, there, there's still a strong attachment to the strictly single-family, you know, neighborhoods, even if you've got to drive to shops or restaurants, and so, you know, I think it's just.
I think that would maybe trip, trip people up because of the notion of sharing the actual building envelope, that it wasn't, that's what I think that might have been more about, as opposed to, this is my house, even though it's a tiny house and I can walk wherever I want to go there, it's, I don't know that that's what it is, but this is sure a country with a culture of buy your own house.
Sure.
And that's like the ultimate thing to do is to have your own house, and I think maybe that might have tripped that question up just a little bit.
Well, and also, most people have had the experience of one bad neighbor on the other side of the wall.
Right.
Well, it sort of points to the need for a diversity of housing types, to me, is what I read out of the results.
So, yeah, that, that's, uh, pretty much wraps up the, the previous surveys, so.
Well, thank you.
You know, we can either throw out some ideas, or.
Well, I think we ought to think about topics, at least, maybe not craft questions, but what do we want to, what are, what's coming up on our agenda and, you know, in the next year, and what types of information would be helpful to inform? I mean, it was interesting, because I came, when I came on the commission in 2013, ADUs were under discussion, and I didn't know what foundation for it was until I saw the survey questions, so it was already.
Wendy, this is probably overly simplistic, but since we only have two questions, we've got to really make them count, but it, do we need to say one of them's got to be involved with planning, and then maybe the other one more related to nuts and bolts zoning issues? And are there problems that you see in implementing zoning that we ought to be asking questions about? So I, I don't know, I just, I, going back to some really basics, you know, what kind of, and you said, well, let's, we got to get some topics out, but what, what kind of question do we want to ask? A lot of these questions look to me like we didn't really gain all that much information that was usable for us.
Well, a recurring problem that sort of ties both together that I see in public hearing comments that, you know, is a resistance to the same type of subdivision being put right next to one that already exists, but they thought they were the end of the edge of whatever, and, and connectivity that people, no matter where they live in town, don't want through streets, and, uh, and I don't know, I mean, it's a, it's a tough question, but, um, it's really the, how do you plan for growth without connectivity?
Right.
And, uh, how do you plan for economic development, which seemed to be a high priority four or five years ago, if you, if you can't develop, but you want to develop in a way that is cohesive and, you know. So somehow I see the, maybe it'll come out of our discussion of complete streets, but I, but I see the, some need for questions around that topic, around connectivity, and, you know, it might mean that if, something like, and all I can think of is scenarios, if you were able to walk to a store or walk to work, if your street, street connected through to a system or something like that, I, would you, you know, would that be preferable to having a cul-de-sac or an isolated street or a, I, I, I don't even know if I'm on the right track, but, but something about community, it seems like that's been a major concern in every public hearing, is that issue of not, no, I don't want something exactly like what I have right next to me, and somebody else had to say the same thing when they did it, so it's, um, it's, you know, it's a touchy issue for people, yeah.
I was just thinking, what if you, um, practice the question with a statement from the comprehensive plan and base your question off that? So be sure that what you're talking about is in the section of the comprehensive plan, and say, that's, that's, this is where we are now. Do you agree with, you know, figure out how you want to capture the information that you can utilize for planning? So because you're not going to have, you can use it as a town hall meeting thing. Here's where we are, is this still where you want to go? Or do you want to go someplace different? But I think it's kind of dovetailing a little.
Joel said about the update, and Mike said about the update of the transportation part of the plan. Is that what you mean? So in a sense, we have this new element that might suggest some changes to the comprehensive plan. So maybe we want more information, but we need to know what that information is first, which we don't know until they come and tell us.
Yeah, we're going to, you know, the, the big things on the horizon are going to be, uh, you know, pretty much changing the structure of the zoning code. You know, we've kind of incrementally changed some things as we've gone along, we're going to change it to the use table, we're going to update the comp plan, things of that nature. You know, what's always kind of stymied us is that you have the ratings of 95% quality of life, you know, every year it's, it comes up at the very top of quality of life, but then planning and zoning is always like 57% or 50 to 60%, and it's, you know, it's, I'm not saying that that should be the question.
And with the least popular commission, too.
Because of school.
That's always just been a conundrum, you know, amongst ourselves, that, well, it's this really high quality of life and, and, you know, planning and zoning, you know, goes into that, a lot of that.
Right.
And, uh, and so, you know, kind of that disconnect is what we've always wondered about, but.
We're rule-driven. I want to look at the rules, that's what they want.
Well, the, one of our big issues is we're a fairly educated little town, and we try to use the same language that the Boisys or Spokanes or Portland's use, even though we're just one neighborhood right now. That's all we are, and, and we keep kind of dreaming out, in, you know, Boise's got some major issues as they've become 600,000 people. The, the neighborhoods within this big hunk of people is really something to really chew on. We're still just one little neighborhood, whether you're riding, walking, riding your bike, or whatever, and so it makes it hard to think of what the question should be, because, you know, even a Boise or a Spokane at least has an example of a neighborhood outside of downtown that they can talk about. I mean, Spokane has three or four really interesting neighborhoods. Boise has the, the, a thing called the Hyde Park that's just dramatically popular with people. I mean, they're just, I had dinner there a couple nights ago, and I mean, just hundreds of people in this neighborhood, which is basically a mile and a half or two miles from downtown, and so people in Boise know what you're talking about when there's, say, a little commercial something. Uh, and, you know, you think about those people that, I mean, the cars and bicycles and motorcycles that come to this neighborhood, Hyde Park neighborhood, and cars park three and four blocks away. I mean, people who live nearby are just over flooded with parking everywhere. I, I just, the thing that's confounded me over the years, being here in Moscow, is that we, we still haven't taken that first, you know, that next step. It may be that the high school, maybe the, the loga school out there on the edge of town will encourage a, I'm pointing at you because I somehow relate you to, but I might be wrong or something, but I, I'm just saying that we've often, Joel and I have had a little red dot on our plan for 20 years, thinking that there would be another little neighborhood pod, and we do have the east, east side market that's a pod. do have the east, east side market, that's a pod, and it works somewhat, but we haven't figured out how to, how to deal with it, and I guess, all I'm saying is, I don't think there are easy ways for us to think of how ourselves, because we're still just this neighborhood, and we're acting like we're a city. You know what I'm saying? I just, I don't know how to, so I'm okay with having the, acting like a city, but I think it's just a little bit fruitless, in the sense that we, we don't know, you know, I think when we grow to be 30,000 or 40,000, the issues are going to get more vivid.
Well, Pullman's at 35, so what differences does it have to us?
Well, they've certainly gone out on Bishop and done stuff out there in some unusual ways.
But their big difference is 20,000-plus students.
Students.
But they have so many students that, you know, our university continues to be a more healthy mix of Moscow, I think. I think Washington State, in such a small town, is not perhaps not-
But Switzer's the third biggest, if not the second biggest.
What?
Switzer's the second biggest employer on the Palouse, probably bigger than the University of Idaho, so it's more than just WSHU.
One of the things that I keep coming back to is, what do we want to do with this information?
Right, I agree with you, so I wanted to go back to what you said, you know, in terms of whether we should split it, planning and zoning, and to me, they should be, I mean, I guess I would like us to, we do zoning, and I wish we did more planning, but zoning is sort of our legal structure, and it's there, and what changes, other than updating the language, what changes do you foresee coming down the pike?
Well-
That would give us a question about zoning.
Yeah, you know, I think that the use table's kind of a no-brainer, I think that that is kind of what everybody's gone to, and it'll be a lot easier, and I think that everybody will like that. You know, maybe something in regards to our subdivision, you know, it'd be the subdivision code that could be the most contentious, you know, getting away from, you know, not allowing cul-de-sacs, for instance, you know, and only in extreme circumstances where the topography may be so limiting that, you know, that would warrant maybe using a cul-de-sac, maybe, you know, things like implementing required pedestrian connections between subdivisions once, you know, maybe the block length reaches a certain point, that after that, you'd be required to have a pedestrian connection. I mean, a lot of these things we do already, but they're, they're just not really off the fly, but they're, they're conditions, and so we're, you know, trying to maybe codify some of these things, and to make them more consistent from subdivision to subdivision.
So to me, that's planning and zoning integrated.
So-
Because the output is better planning.
It kind of is, I mean, 20 years ago, we wouldn't have seen that, so doing these surveys kind of tells us what, what we want to do, I mean, bike paths and bigger footpaths and bigger tree, I mean, all those surveys is what helps us, I think, bring us where we are today, otherwise we would still be, you know.
Well, and looking at the modified street plan that we just looked at for Peekaboo Street, I mean, in a sense, that ties in with our complete streets discussion, but, you know, it's definitely an animal I don't think we would have seen in a standard subdivision, you know, 10 years ago.
Yeah.
So I agree with you, I think, you know, so maybe that's where we fish around for questions.
Yeah, you know, we could, I could revisit that and maybe give a presentation next time, and kind of some of those things that could be contentious, and so we could get some good information back from them.
I have a question about quality of life, had that been, so, we know that people commute from-
They can't hear you on the, when you're not up by the lights.
You know how people commute from St. Mary's to Pullman, and from Clarkston to Potlatch, and I worked with people that did that, do you think quality of life is so car-related that people think that the general easy commute to some, through someplace views beautiful, not necessarily walking, is a quality of life? When you look at the ratio of people that drive compared to who walks, I mean, have we broken down what that means, quality of life?
I think it's just been general in the questions, but I'd say just overall quality of life, I mean, factor in everything, jobs, community, schools, you know, amenities downtown, I, you know, I think it-
Overall consensus.
Overall, you know, quality of your life in a community. I think that probably means different things to different people, but obviously, it kind of means largely the same thing if we're getting the scores that are consistent like that every year, I mean, it's pretty much 95% would agree.
That's one of the questions that's always on there.
Uh-huh.
So what I wonder is, how much of that satisfaction has to do with the fact that we are just a neighborhood, in your term? And do we hit some point somewhere where that's not the feel anymore, and suddenly the satisfaction goes down? Is there any way to predict what that is? Is there any way to avoid the pitfalls of it? Does that-
Surveys.
Like, where's the tipping point? That now it's not such a great place to live anymore?
Well, probably just be tracking, and, I mean, we asked the same, those same questions, we got these demographic questions that we ask every year, and so I think it, you know, those almost always stay the same or go up, or, you know, but they're always pretty consistent, so.
And who puts those together, those demographics?
They're, they're just all included in the survey, so these are just a small portion that each commission gets to ask, but largely, a lot of the questions are pretty much the same, every, from year to year, just so we could track the changes, you know, ask questions about crime rate, perceptions, perceptions of crime, schools, you know, it pretty much asks all those community-related questions every time we have a citizen survey.
Well, that was one thing I was thinking, is if we can look at previous surveys and figure out a follow-up question to see if we can discern any trends in people's attitudes, you know, like the mixed-use thing is, is kind of an example to see if people are getting more and more accepting of that or not. I just glanced through, and, you know, that was the closest one, and it wasn't even real, a real clear progression, the questions weren't quite close enough.
Yeah.
But that might be something to look at in the previous surveys, to see if there is something that's worth, worth a follow-up question, to see if we can discern people's attitudes changing.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we had a, you know, the couple of years, we had some similar questions, but, you know, without the goal of where we're going with that, you know, it was kind of the bigger question.
The ADU seems to be the most informative.
ADU seems to satisfy that, in the time being, I mean, you, I think all the things that we can do in order to densify in a, in a good way of, you know, without ruining these neighborhoods, I think we made steps, you know, reduce setbacks, incorporated ADUs, things of that, you know, reduce minimum loss sizes a little bit, you know, things of that nature that you can, that you can do in order to, you know, slowly kind of increase density, I think we've already done, so.
Sometime in another, another few years, it may be appropriate to ask a question as to how we're doing on ADUs, but it's probably too early yet.
Well, I got a presentation next.
Yeah, I asked them, yeah, that's coming up next, and maybe we should just move on, but keep in mind some questions that you might want to bring to the table. But I had asked them, because of Brenda von Drunstus' sort of comment at the last meeting, I asked Mike if he could give us some kind of update on how much we really are implementing the ADU.
So, you know, it seems like a long time ago, but it was just April 6th last year, where those ADUs were finally approved, just to remind you all, allowed in all residential zones, and then we had the standards, limiting them to 600 square feet size, or 40% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever's less applies, and then limiting to two occupants, and requiring the owner to live on-site, whether in the main dwelling or the EDU, and then requiring an additional off-street parking space. But we've only permitted three, you know, it seems like, I wanted to say that we had about six, but, yeah, looking back, we've only had three. These are some examples of the three that we've done. We had one in University Heights area, not necessarily in University Heights, but kind of, I guess, Conestoga, Victoria area, this was an addition, they're doing a garage addition, and they had some, some space, and they originally listed it as unfinished, this was when we were going through the EDU, and once it got passed, and they decided they wanted to create some type of EDU up above there, so the stairwell just goes down into the garage space, and then they have this studio apartment here with a, you know, a little bit of a closet, you know, just open bedroom, living room area, and then just a small kitchenette and a bathroom.
So they didn't really change the envelope, they just-
No, and this was, yeah, I have a, so this was the house, they, they just ended up adding on to it here, and so this was the original, and they added, added the garage bay, and they just added this space, so you really can't even tell that there, you know, is an accessory dwelling unit in the, in the dwelling, so that was one of them, so, you know, not detached in the, in the main dwelling. And then we had one, this is just on the edge of Fort Russell, kind of in the northwest, off a D Street, it's about a block south, this is C Street right here, and it was Mark Hume's place, and he ended up building a new garage over here, and then he put some livable space, or an EDU above it, so it's kind of, the hillside slopes up here on the property, he dug out the area, and so this is, you know, this would be pretty much, the grade would be somewhere over here, and then he just added a second story onto the garage bay here, and this would be the EDU up here, so it goes up, this is the, kind of the southwest, looking from the house, the garage is in the, in the ground, and then he goes up, and you've got a small EDU space, this is just another side of it there, so this one's just above a garage. Then we had one in the 7th, 8th Street area, and they had a nice house, but they had an existing garage off of an alley right here, and they decided to, there's already one bay in the garage, they had a driveway coming off of, I believe it's Adams Street there, but they had a, you know, some additional space and a garage with a single bay, and decided to make one portion of it as an EDU, so it's not above, it's just right to the side. These were kind of the rough floor plans, then of the existing garage bay, left the garage, and then had the EDU living space there, and so those were the three that we permitted, and so hopefully-
So there hasn't been a big jump for people who had illegal ones to legalize them, really, it sounds like?
Well, there's one that we're currently working with, I believe that he just put it up for sale, and either the bank or somebody was questioning, he ended up doing the work, I think, without a permit, so we're working with him to get it legal, and I think it meets all the criteria, and so we'll likely get another one on there, and so, you know, it, there's not people pounding down the door to get ADUs, it's kind of, you know, when they see the need, they'll come talk about it, and, but yeah, it's, you know, been kind of slow and steady for, for ADU, ADU usage. So, you know, as far as the concerns of compromising a lot of these neighborhoods, we haven't had any complaints at all as to any of these three, and so-
No one's ever seen Mark's lot anyway, so no one-
Can't see that.
No one's ever been to it, I mean, you know, it is the most obscure lot in town, as far as I can tell.
Yeah, it's one of the most-
Sitting up against a hill the way it is, it's just, it's a very private place, and you could do almost anything there, no one would know.
Do you get, not that I guess it makes a whole lot of difference at this point, but do you get the sense that, that the intent behind the three is what we were trying to satisfy the need that we thought was there, or is it totally unrelated? Not that it really matters, I mean, at this point, but.
Well, I think that, I think it just gives people that, that opportunity to be able to do it, you know, I think it fits what we were seeing with the citizen survey, showing that, well, maybe people aren't going to rush out and get one on their property, but they're not opposed to their neighbor having one, and so this need, you know, as far as maybe caring for an elderly family member, or a boomerang child, these have mainly been for some type of rental income, is what my understanding is, but at least this one, I think the other two are mainly to accommodate maybe guests that come in certain times of the year, type of thing, so, but, you know, that was always one of the advantages of having ADUs, is to allow that as well, so.
Well, the rent structure in Moscow, because I'm, is just not high enough to warrant people spending the money to build one unless they have a really good reason to do it.
That was my comment, I don't know what the report would be, it'd be interesting to hear it from Boise, that, you know, they did an EDU before we did, and the North End has gotten so incredibly expensive, that my guess is they've had quite a bit of action, narrow, little tiny narrow houses and similar things.
They don't have tons of wheat fields to expand it.
No, they don't have tons of wheat fields, and as a city has grown so dramatically, it puts a different pressure on, and like I say, I don't think that we're, growing at 0.7 or 0.8% a year just isn't enough pressure to expect to see too much change, but I, I think both the ADUs and Legacy Crossing have been brilliant things that we've done, but we're, like I said, we're, we're over-thoughtful, but there are people who say we have way too many administrators in our city, you know? And we are, we kind of do, I think we do have, because we expect to act like big city people, even though we're just a little town.
Well, then we put these plans in place, and it's not for, you know, 10, 15 years down the line, when a lot of them, you know, we see the results.
Yeah, I think so.
You know, it's not just this instant gratification that we're going to pass ADUs, and all of a sudden, 20 of them are going to be knocking on the door.
I was just curious to see if it really was upsetting neighbors and realtors and everybody in town, and I can't see how three instances where two of them you can't even see would generate that kind of-
If I could get a cheap loan from the city, I'd do one right away, and we could then do four.
Yeah, it seems like the ones that we've seen are, maybe they're already doing a garage, building a garage, or, you know, doing one of those projects, and it's not a whole lot of additional money in order to be able to add on to a second story, you know, they've already got the, a lot of money with the concrete and the foundation and everything, and just some additional lumber, and they're already going to have a roof on it, you know, that's just pretty much walls to go up another story, so it's probably cost-effective if they've already got a project planned in order to be able to put one in, so.
Besides Mark as a builder.
Yeah, and that's the big one for the cost, if you don't have to pay for the labor.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd be interested, too, in seeing a few years from now, I mean, look, at one way, it's, it's 25% of the ADUs are bringing illegal, you know, structures into, into the legal realm, and it'd be interesting to see if that trend maintains itself.
Yeah. So, you know, I could see maybe a couple on the horizon, I don't know, I mean, it'll be interesting to see if somebody decides to do one that's just a standalone, and just a more tiny-house-looking one, whether or not that garners any attention from people about whether or not that would be allowed.
Do you have any idea what they're renting for? Have you heard anything about that?
I haven't heard at all, but I would imagine somewhere $400 to $500.
Yeah, that's the thing, do you spend $100,000 on a new garage with an apartment above it, or do you rent an apartment around the corner for $450 a month? I mean- I mean, you know, I can say personally that's been our situation. So, you know, if you need somebody who's to live close.
There's that, well, that's building tiny houses in La Crosse. That would be interesting if somebody moved one of those in and-
Well, yeah, I've seen, yeah, I, my next-door neighbor up at, at Haber Park is building them up in Spokane and he gave me the plans just to look at and it's, you know, and you can see them going down the road, they're kind of cute, you know, they're essentially mobile homes that become permanent. But they're, you know, you kind of go up into a bed and that's your bedroom. I mean, they are, it commands a, but they're using it as interim housing for people who need, you know, sort of almost emergency housing.
Wouldn't work for the elderly.
No, not, well-
Not that style.
Not that style, no. Other styles probably wouldn't work, I doubt.
That's pretty interesting.
Yeah, we've had a lot, you know, every year we have a number of people that come in to talk about maybe putting one or doing a small community, but nobody's really moved forward with that. Probably in the next five, 10 years, we'll probably see some type of small PUD or something that comes in with tiny homes.
Yeah.
Especially with the, you know, college kids. I think they're, you know, maybe ones that live in mobile homes or, you know, that's a lot more attractive to them to maybe minimalize and do a tiny home as opposed to rent a mobile home at a mobile home park.
I assume we will probably see more of them over time as some of the non-conforming ones end up changing hands with sale.
Right, right. It forces the issue, doesn't it?
Yeah, forces the issue. We'll probably see those.
Okay. Well, did you have-
I would guess that every one of, you know, those three that have been built, I bet each one of them's got at least two people that looked at it and said, "Oh, that's kind of cool." Might be something to think about. So that'll just keep growing out as you get more done.
Yeah.
So, next item on the agenda, thank you Mike for the update. Non-conformities draft ordinance?
If you don't mind, I think we'd probably skip this one till next. I'm still planning on doing some more research on this, so it's not quite ripe to bring it to the commission yet. But I do, as far as minor PUD amendments for the draft ordinance, I did kind of finalize the draft copy. I can pass that around.
My guess, a last question on the EDU. I think if somebody has a unit, like over the garage unit that's currently there, does that issue come up automatically if somebody sells? Or does it have to be only brought up if the bank gets, makes a question about it?
It usually gets brought up whether or not, you know, the, nowadays, the appraisers are usually a little more astute than they were at one point in time about-
Yeah, for sure, they are.
You know, so they, any recent work that they see that, you know, may be of question, they'll ask for whether or not you got a permit for them. So, we've got a lot more interaction with them about, you know, making sure that people get permits or, you know, so we've had a lot of them after the fact come in, get permits to correct the situation.
I'm curious, because a house, just three houses down from us, has a garage that has a unit over it built in. As far as I know, no one has ever lived in that unit. It's full of stuff. It's just like the next attic. And so, the house sold here just in the last year, but I didn't hear anything about it. But my guess is, it's not obvious enough and I doubt that the bank even, as astute as they may be, I don't think they probably saw it. You know, we have two of those units in our neighborhood that always intrigued me because I thought, "I would like to have one too."
If it's being counted as a positive in an appraisal, then it comes up.
Well, and there is also that we were allowed to, I mean, the code used to allow and still does, I guess, I can't remember what we did with it, but guest houses that don't have kitchens and they're all over the place, that might be detached, you know. So that might be even what they were built as. It's just an extra bedroom for guests, it's separate but without a kitchen.
Yeah, usually they don't ask a whole lot of que, unless there's a full kitchen in there and it's, you know, obvious that somebody could live in there, then usually that's when they ask questions and especially if they have rental income that they've been utilizing for the last, or realizing for the last, you know, number of years.
Exactly, I think that rental income would be the thing that would trigger the bank to think about.
Right, exactly, yeah. Okay, thanks. That's for sure, yeah. So, you want, what did you want to tell us about the minor PUD?
Well, this is, I've got a couple draft versions here of the ordinance. There's one with all the strike-throughs and then another clean version of what that would look like. And so, this is just, you know, we had discussed this last time and Brenda was here and I didn't really change a whole lot. We had, as far as the kind of proposed criteria at the end, at the time we had talked about, you know, when we looked at those other jurisdictions, a lot of them moved the minor PUD amendments over to administrative. So they had staff make a determination as to whether or not it met the minor or the major and then if it was minor enough, staff could just approve that administratively. And then the rest of them, you know, usually had criteria for what constituted a major amendment. And so, what I've done is tried to incorporate that aspect of it in the beginning. So we talk about minor amendments stating that the ones that do not meet the major amendment criteria could be approved administratively by the zoning administrator. And then we retain some of the same language about, you know, what they need to submit for the nature and circumstances of the request and the plans and drawings to support it. And then we included a statement at the end saying that if the zoning administrator determines that the change may have a significant impact on the approved project, the administrator may decline to administratively approve such change and shall process the request as a major amendment. We wanted to include, you know, some type of statement like that in there to, you know, give us a little bit of discretion to look at it and maybe it doesn't meet the major, you know, maybe it's something we didn't think of and it doesn't meet the criteria for a major amendment. We still wanted the opportunity to be able to, you know, take that to the commission and have a public hearing. So, you know, maybe it's the Tiempo Commons Amendment where, you know, we create twin homes instead of just single, you know, there's still a single-family dwelling, so it could say that, you know, they're not increasing the density per se, but they're maybe changing a housing type and maybe that should be a major change, that the commission should conduct a public hearing to review. And so, wanted to still leave that door open for us to be able to, you know, have a little bit of discretion and maybe it doesn't meet the major amendment, but we still want to take a look at it anyway. So, I put that in there. And then previously, we had it structured such that, you know, this would be the current where we have all the reasons why, unless it meets all these criteria, it'd be a minor amendment. So now we've kind of shifted it so that if it meets these criteria, it'd be a major amendment. And so it just seemed to make a little bit more sense to us to structure it that way. So, we haven't changed some of the criteria, a lot of it in regards to environmental impact of the development, phasing or timing. Those all pretty much stay the same. You know, eliminate factors to use to justify any density bonuses or code standard waivers that were granted. So a lot of that, we've kept in there. We had changed, you know, a lot of the redundant, about the one through four or five seemingly had some redundant language to them. And so we've tried to clear that up. You know, I think that these were pretty consistent with the rest of the jurisdictions that we had taken a look at for the percentages, you know, exceeding residential density, I think that would kick in the major amendment. Increasing the enclosed floor area, so this would allow some, you know, slight increases to building footprints without having to go through a public hearing. So, it would allow for, you know, maybe it's a small addition that doesn't equal the 5%.
This kind of, this came up because of the asylum thing, because of Brenda.
Yeah, and, you know, the more we looked at it and, you know, we were trying to make something fit for her development, but, you know, looking at all the rest of the PUDs, it was going to have a lot more of a major effect on them. You know, it made sense to say that, well, it's, she's in R4 and she has some professional office and it would be no big deal just to have another dwelling be created in that professional office because it's R4 zone.
It didn't seem like a-
Yeah, it didn't seem like a big deal, but when you, you know, when we, what we found when we tried to, you know, change and kind of craft that language to fit that scenario, it didn't fit all the rest of the PUDs that we have and it would be more of an impact on to them in order to kind of fix her immediate problem. You know, she's going to end up converting the whole thing to residential, it sounds like anyway, it's just that she's got the hairdresser that still has a two-year lease and so that's really the issue with her right now. But, you know, this would still, the way it's written right now underneath our code, she would have to submit those plans and go before planning and zoning. It wouldn't be a public hearing, but she'd still have to, you know, attend a meeting and submit plans and everything. You know, the way it, our proposed changes would be, she'd be classified as a major amendment, so she would still just have one meeting, but it'd be a public hearing and that's the only difference. And so she could still, you know, she wouldn't have to start completely through the beginning of the process the way it's structured, you know. I think that, we've cleaned up the language quite a bit, but I think the major change is not requiring you to go start from the very beginning just because you qualify as a major amendment. You know, before, you would have to, you know, start from the neighborhood meeting part of it. You know, you're looking at four-
Yeah, that just seems to be silly to me.
Yeah, four months, yeah.
You're looking at four months, so-
Most of these things that we're talking about, I think maybe like staff could, and just as a final point, I think you should always say minor amendment to a PUD, not minor PUD amendment. I don't want to say it's a minor PUD. I don't want somebody to think it's a minor PUD.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, because any PUD that people do is not minor. It's a, so I think that, I like the way the top goes, minor amendment criteria, minor amendment to a PUD.
Yeah.
But it does seem like we're making too much do about something that staff could handle.
Yeah, and so that would be the shift, you know, if it's, you know, one of the, like, think of the ones we've taken a look at in the past. We had Greensides up on Polk, we had a variant, you know, more or less a variance, it was right next to the detention pond and they wanted to be a couple feet closer to that. You know, I don't think those things really need to be coming to the commission.
If it doesn't subvert the intent of a PUD process in some ways, that either neighbors are put at a disadvantage or community in some way.
So I think we can handle those minor ones, you know. If we're uneasy about it, we still have this provision that would allow it to be declared a major and could come to the commission, so.
Under the body exercising jurisdiction, isn't that the Planning and Zoning Commission?
No, if it's associated with a subdivision plat, it goes to council. So, we've got, earlier on in the PUD code, we've got two types. We've got a type one PUD and a type two. Type one, planning and zoning gives final approval. Type two are ones associated with subdivisions plats, which have to go to council for a subdivision plat. So, those end up being, you know, getting final approval for, from city council.
So, you're saying that a major one of type two would go to council, not to PNC?
Well, it comes through PUD and goes to council.
Yeah, it would just go to council.
It doesn't go straight to council.
Well, it seems like it should go to us first.
Okay.
I mean, don't we recommend a council anyway?
We do, but-
Does council want to see it first?
No, I always appreciate the fact that it comes through PNC first.
So we could, you know, I could change that to say that in the case of a type two application, it shall go to, you know, planning and zoning and then on the city council. I could do that.
Presumably, PNC saw the original.
Yeah.
We might have some memory of what we did. And that might apply. I think it makes sense to have it come to the commission and then on the council.
Yeah, I, sure.
So then it would just be PNC may approve with conditions and forward to council for-
And making recommendations to council.
Right, right.
Yeah, you know, we already used the type one, type two, so I could reword it to say in the, you know, case of a type one, PNC, one public hearing before PNC. In the case of a type two, it would be a public hearing before PNC and then a public hearing before council.
Right, that makes sense.
So I could, yeah, I could do that.
Yeah. We need more work. No, I think it's a good idea. So, what do you want us to do with this tonight? Are you going to come back with?
Yeah, I'd probably look at it maybe one more time. We'll take another look at it and make sure that we're not missing anything.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to.
Yeah, if I gave you a kind of a hard copy to be able to look through it and just let me know if, we'll talk about it next time and then if everything looks fine, we can queue it up for a public hearing and go from there, so.
Okay, sounds good. All right, that brings us to shared readings discussion. So, on complete streets, we had some report from Joel. And Joel, maybe you could start by just bringing us up to speed on where we are with complete streets in Moscow with the Transportation Commission, et cetera.
Well, I think both this commission and the Transportation Commission are strong advocates of complete streets. The city does not have any overall statement affirming that. And I think that's part of what is in the offering is to try to make it a city policy that we support and require complete streets, meaning streets that will accommodate both all forms of use of motor vehicles, bicycles, walkers, horses.
Okay, well, horses always seem to be, when it's on horses.
An issue that I wonder about with complete streets is, in the 60s and 70s, we have many streets in Moscow that don't have any sidewalks. And if we get to a point where we want to state a recommendation and we can't even have a sidewalk in our town, so the little children and grandmas can walk up and down the street without walking out in the middle of the street, you know, what kind of position does this put us in? And so, I don't know how many miles of street, but we can see the history of streets if we just start right here and go to Mountain View, we can see everything. And there's a whole, there's a whole five or six streets of blocks of stuff that have no- have no sidewalks whatsoever. And so what I want to just remind ourselves of, when we start making a recommendation that we're big on streets, what does that mean? That we tell the people in those neighborhoods, they have to build a sidewalk? Or does the city bite the bullet and help with building those sidewalks? Or do we just act like we didn't know that we have all these streets that are far, far from being complete?
Well, the most important one that happened in the last five years or so is D Street because that's, what, two schools on D Street?
Yeah, we had a safe route to school.
And a major arterial now and, and we had no sidewalks. It was...
And so the city, the city's there.
Yeah, the city, that's what I was going to ask, because who did that? Was that the city?
Yeah, it was a grant. It was a safe routes to school.
Polk too, they're doing those sidewalks. So I think they're going where they need to be, just like clicking them off as they go along.
Yeah, a lot of it's newer, you know, new streets.
Yeah.
And trying to fill in where we can, when we have the money or grants to do it. But, you know, the new street standards are pretty much complete streets. So we've got, you know, bike lanes, five-foot wide sidewalks, tree lines, you know.
I understand that.
And so I think it's more or less just, we've already got it incorporated in our street standards. It's just having this broad statement saying that we support complete streets and...
Well, it seems like it's, it happens in, okay, it's happening in new subdivisions or new development and some retrofit in areas, but, you know, some of, some of the most public places, I mean, when I was reading the criteria of what complete streets should look like and what they are and how they should accommodate all forms of transportation, I think of, for example, all of the people on Farmer's Market Day who park north of Washington and they have to cross that bloody street, which you can stand in the middle of the crosswalk and people just about mow you down. I mean, I cross it all the time, but you see people trying, and have problems with people just ignoring, you know. And so what does it mean when you start to get into interfaces like that, where, and there is a lot of public trying to go back and forth, does it mean that you start to pick strategic points that really accommodate pedestrians instead of just allowing them to bleed across, you know, multiple crosswalks that people aren't even looking at? You know, and I, but it seems like it's a, it's a, the couplet is a real pedestrian and bicycle division in our complete street system that everybody uses almost in town in one way or another, you know.
No, I agree with you. That is dangerous. But I think at the time, it was, it was a complete street. And then the farmer's market came and that's just, it is, it's a zoo down there on Saturday's carry, but I think we've always been complete streets, even back in the day. I mean, I think it's just evolved into a completer street of evolution, you know.
Well, we didn't for, in that period of time after the war.
1950s, 1960s.
The 60s and 70s, we, we just gave them up. And I'm stunned that we did that.
We gave up sidewalks.
I was, I guess, too young to be involved in any, any management business or whatever.
Selling a lot of the automobile.
That's right.
Yeah, we did, that's...
You know, a lot of it depended on the vision of the people. I live in a, in an old 1950s development and we have sidewalks, we have green, it's University Heights.
And it was planned, it, you know, yeah.
They did it that way because they knew that they wanted that kind of a neighborhood. But right next to us, you go onto Ridge Road and there's nothing and it's curvy and there's, it's impossible to...
Well, we could thank your daddy a little bit for that.
He was part of that. There was no question. But, you know, there was a bunch of professors that knew what they wanted in a neighborhood.
But it took innovation rather than the norm.
Exactly. It's amazing.
And Ridge Road's a perfect example of a wonderful street that acts like no one's ever going to walk again. I mean, we, we don't, we, we're just going to wear our Sunday go-to-meeting shoes every day because we're not going to wear any shoes out. Thank you.
It was cheaper too.
Oh, sure. Well, developers bit off on it because it meant you didn't have to do a sidewalk.
Well, in the Petrowski book I was talking about, he mentions that, that there was one school of thought that you actively discourage pedestrians near arteries. And I think one of the ways they did that is just say, okay, yeah, no sidewalks, nobody in their right mind is going to be walking down this street.
Well, I don't know, you know, I'm talking about, since traffic and congestion was one of the major concerns on the, on the survey, seriously, do I, when, if you thumb, or if you run through those PowerPoints that are part of the reading, I don't know if anybody did, but, and they have some great visual examples. I love the one where they show the four scenarios of, you know, the carrying capacity of a street. And when you just have vehicles, it's all jammed up in all three lanes. When you have a carrying capacity that also includes pedestrian and bicycle use and they kind of break it down, you know, there's like four cars sitting there, you know, when, when it's fully utilized in those other dimensions, so it's, I thought that was a great example of what, what congestion and traffic, carrying capacity could, could mean.
Back to Joel's point, where would be the appropriate place that we would make that kind of a statement so that it's obvious what it is and why we want it?
Probably be a resolution, you know, usually for a complete streets policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually those broad communities, you know, vision statements are usually resolutions. And so I don't know if that's what Les thinks, too.
I think, I think both this commission and the Transportation Commission would have an interest in pushing it forward.
So should we craft it together? Should we have a joint meeting at some point or should we do drafts and...
At least exchange drafts.
You're in, bring it, you're in.
At least exchange drafts.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll see what the consensus is tomorrow.
I mean, is there broader interest in doing that, do you think?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, then it probably would be a good thing to end with the two commissions working together to beat...
You know, it's, it's not likely to change very much, but what it, it gives a handle that can be used as verbiage in grant, in grant writing. It, but it's not going to change the fact that we tend to apply these things to new subdivisions and we tend to try to upgrade the areas.
I like that you said that because it didn't make any sense to me before, why we would do this, but for, for stuff like that, it does make sense.
Yeah.
So I'm on board now.
Okay, well, do we need any, I mean, how should we proceed with drafting a resolution? Is that something that we want a subcommittee to do?
Well, we would probably just, I think the, the resolution would be coming from the final product of, you know...
Well, I, I mean, a draft, I mean, you know, just like getting the ball rolling is what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, I could talk to Les about what he envisions with that and then, yeah, if there's any ability to have both commissions give some input on it.
Right. I think it's one of those things that could probably have...
No, I didn't.
Some kind of a little publication with more than just resolution words or...
I think the images were great in those PowerPoints, yeah.
But images, yeah, are the things that help you say and knowing what some of the issues are in our town, I think we should look at some of those issues before we go so far to, we don't want to make fun of ourselves by acting like we support something that we've obviously not supported in the past.
No, Catherine just pointed out something that I didn't know. There's a Moscow Sidewalks Property Owner Assistance Program that is on the city's website that is something that's already out there. I didn't, I didn't think about that, so.
The only thing that's unclear to me about the program is they show a picture. I don't know if you want to bring it up or show them. There's a picture that shows like if you have faulty, cracking or spalling or missing sidewalk. So with the missing sidewalk piece that you're discussing, then the owner can get assistance, you know, and it talks about all the things that the city will do to come out and help you assess being able to put the sidewalk.
So maybe you can answer the question I got on my way to this meeting tonight when I walked past my neighbor and she stopped me and she said, "Why do I have a little pink flag at the edge of my property line, right at the edge of the sidewalk?" And I, and are they going to widen the street? And I said, "No way."
I think it's gas.
And I thought, oh, okay, because I thought, maybe that's what it is. But it was right next to a particularly broken up chunk of sidewalk, so I thought maybe it was a citation of some sort for that. But I thought the case...
Well, not necessarily a citation, but maybe it's marking, I don't know if you've all seen this, but if you go to the city website, it's underneath, you go to the projects and programs, you just want to search for it.
Yeah, sure.
And then it'll let you know because they can contact the department and then you can have someone, you might tell your neighbor about it and they...
Because the city isn't out patrolling people, well, they do very much. And so, I mean, I can show you a place on Third, you would think that since Third is so wonderful and it's so, everybody walking on it, right? I mean, I can show you a place where the sidewalk just dead ends and there's four or five families that just didn't ever build a sidewalk. Thank you. And so that means that people walking along, they're just simple people who don't know what they're doing, walking down the street, next thing you know, they're out in the street, whether they like it or not. And boom, there. So it's a kind of an interesting thing. And I don't think the city's ever put any pressure on those, those owners.
It's about two-thirds of the way down under progress.
Maybe not the ones that are missing sidewalk, but sidewalk that's broken or healed. They go in spurts and mark that.
And so, so if you go under, just on the main website and you go under city government and it says programs and projects, and then it lists all the, all the projects, you know, so Third Street and everything, all the things that are being done are listed, but then this shows you how a citizen can access getting their sidewalk replaced or creating a sidewalk on their property if they wish to have one, so.
Yeah, and the property owner still has to pay for it.
Oh, yeah.
It's just the city comes and cordies everything. So they'll go out there.
But it's the start of happening.
And usually we contract with, we'll contract with a concrete company and then they'll get a better rate just because they'll pick one day or, you know, one week out of the whole year and so it'll be a bulk rate.
And the, and the city kind of marks where it should go so that it is saved probably too. You don't have to get a survey.
Do you have any ideas what the cost per linear foot? Uh, I don't know. It's not that expensive, you know, but I can't give you a current cost.
Do you think this program was meant more for sidewalks that are currently existing and are deteriorating as opposed to, say you had, say you had a whole block that no one ever had to put sidewalk in?
It's for both.
Yeah, it should, they should.
They just hope you get it.
Okay. The problem then is if there's no curb to start with, then you'd be building a sidewalk.
There's the next page.
At least we're, our city is semi-good on having curbs. You know, there are, you can find some places in the United States that didn't ever hear of a curb.
Yeah, stormwater runoff is the big one. I mean, that's why you almost always have curbs just to...
That's why in New Orleans, the curbs are this tall.
Yeah.
Wow. When we lived in Singapore, there's huge canals next to the streets. I mean, it's, you can't, you can't get to the sidewalk from the street.
Yeah, I think any place that has monsoon seasons has an issue with that. Even Little Burkina Faso, they get the monsoons and so they have ditches along the side of the road.
So is there anything more we want to say about complete streets?
I think, I think there's a lot to, I think it's a little more complicated than, than, I mean, saying that we like them is one thing, but trying to decide what direction the city should take with it is probably a little more complicated, I don't think.
Well, as, as you see, the city is addressing them to some, to some degree. We could, we could do more if more money were channeled into it. The sidewalk program, it does have a limited budget.
Well, unless McDonald's is coming on the 14th and that could be very much part of the discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's a form you can fill out online to get, I mean, it's, there's another page and bring it up, but it's very simple. You just put your, you just submit a request, I mean, so...
A request for, I've lost you, I'm sorry.
To get the property owner's assistance program. You can just have somebody, you put a request in, you get it evaluated. So it's, it's very simple to make a request. Besides a phone call, you can fill out, look up the form and it's got full lines and you can send it out.
Does the city have a grant writer?
Yeah.
Because it might be interesting to get some input from them about the sort of statement that might come up. Oh, I'm sure she's working with Les about that, yeah.
Well, she's the best.
Well, that's, that's where the funds have come from for the, you know, safe routes to school and a couple of other examples that have, have built sidewalks. That's, we have a very good grant writer.
Yeah, she is really good.
Just as an odd aside, it's been a very pleasant summer at, living on Third Street this year.
What was the...
I haven't seen a car go by my house. I mean, I'm in shock, but if you haven't, it's a little too late now. If you hadn't gone down, you missed some wonderful stuff going on on Third. They just have, they went as, down as, they were down as deep as 14 feet into the ground. I have pictures. I'll bring some images for you. It's amazing. And one of the, I mean, Les, we can ask Les about this. I'll bring a picture for Les. There's a water, a water valve that they installed that, I don't know whether the contractor knows what he's talking about. I'm getting the beep. We, we take drinks and donuts and stuff out to the guys on our street, but they, this one valve costs $50,000.
Wow.
It is big. It's as high as a man. I mean, it's down in the ground like, it's shocking to see the stuff. I haven't seen infrastructure, you know, in New York, fine, that's good, San Francisco, we get it, but in Moscow, and of course, they have a little unit that goes into the ground. If they go below five feet, they have to have a sidewalk so it won't cave in on somebody. But they were down in the ground 14 feet on the corner of Third and Hayes.
Wow.
I was stunned and it's been very exciting.
An entertaining summer.
Yeah, and a lot of people are complaining like, oh my gosh, when's this construction going to be over? And I thought, my view is, if we are doing this kind of infrastructure in our town, that means that we have at least some funds to try and take care of the, of the, of the systems because they're dealing with water, sewer, and storm, all three. And the problem is that part of the reason they're going down so low is you've got these several things that can't run into each other and so it's really, so that's a nuance on complete streets.
Construction projects are recreational, entertainment for us retirement people.
Yeah, exactly. I've gotten to the place where the guys running the big machinery, they all, they all know us, so they, they wave and, you know, it's been, it's been quite a lot of fun. But other than that, people of course are not, now walking on sidewalks on Third, so concert, at every corner, so you're, there's new paths everywhere as people try and find their way.
Okay, well, I guess, could we adjourn? Thank you, everybody.